Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, April 10th, 2018, now called to utter at approximately 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members, to please refrain from asking any questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. First item on our agenda this evening is applicant citizen's petition for public hearing. It's an applicant citizen's petition, an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaws, Section 9.3.1.3, registered marijuana dispensaries in accordance with MGL Chapter 40a, Section 5. Have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make the motion to open the meeting?
Devin?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the town clerk's office received a citizen's petition to amend six sections of the registered marijuana dispensary bylaw. These came in about six weeks ago to the town clerk's office, were brought to the selectmen, and the selectmen then through Mass General Law, 40a, Section 5, passed it off to the planning board for a public hearing, which was scheduled in accordance with those regulations. I would like to ask through the chairman if there is any one of the petitioners here this evening that would like to speak on behalf of the article. There being none, Mr. Chairman, the first item in front of us today is an amendment to these site restrictions. So as you've received in your packets, actually prior to going over the individual item, just want to point out to the members that we have received three letters from town departments that were at your places when you got here, one from the Auburn Police Department, one from the Auburn Water District, and one from the Department of Development and Inspection So if the members want to review those while I'm going over the section, please feel free to do so. So the citizen petition is set up in three separate public hearings, so we'll have to open and close each one. So in the first one that's been opened today, I'll go over those two amendments. Those two amendments are to remove Sections 9.3.13.2a, and that one reads, "An RMD facility," an RMD being a registered marijuana dispensary, this being a medical dispensary, "with or without cultivation operations cannot be located within one mile of any other RMD." The purpose of the bylaw, that section, when this was drafted by the zoning bylaw review committee and accepted at town meeting in October of 2016, was to take, oh, there's a better way to open this, excuse me, I'm gonna do that in PDF. That is every meeting to me, doesn't it? So there's two sections, one of them is here on the green, so the general industrial district outside of the aquifer 2 zone, and the other area...
And Matt, that's the Technology Drive?
Yes, that's the North Street and Route 20 and Technology Drive area. We felt that was a good spot for this, for one of these facilities. And the other section is on Route 12 north, heading towards Worcester, but on the westbound side where Polar Beverages, Ari Michaels, and the former Thunderbird Bowling Alley used to be, that general area. So by choosing those two locations, and by putting the bylaw in that said they cannot be located within one mile of each other, that assured that only one facility could be located in each zone. That was the thought process behind that. So this petition proposes to remove that restriction. The second half...
And we're voting on as to whether or not we want to approve that petition?
Correct. And the second part of this first petition is 9.3.13.2f, is that no RMD shall be located within the Zone 2 Aquifer and Watershed Protection Overlay District. The purpose of keeping them out of the Aquifer Protection Overlay District is to protect Auburn's water supply. As you know, Auburn's water supply is not through a reservoir, it's through groundwater, it's through the aquifer. Auburn has its own issues with transportation, contributing to Auburn's high salt content in its water, and we understand just that these users are going to be high-volume users of water for cultivation purposes naturally. So we felt it was in the best interest as a new use, a lot of unknowns, not knowing how they take care of materials or whatnot, to prohibit it from the Aquifer 2 district, at this time, and the Water District supported that idea. So the petitioner is asking to remove that restriction from the bylaw. So those are the two that are before us today. If I'm willing to discuss or ask questions, I'll be happy to answer. Not sure if the petitioner, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, through the chair, has arrived yet. Don't believe so.
Scott?
Nothing.
John?
Well, one of the things that I'd like to point out in the letter from Ken Smith and in regards to aquifers is that he makes reference to protecting the water supply from fertilizers, pesticides, and herbicides. As far as a registered medical marijuana grower goes, they're not allowed to use anything but organic fertilizers, no pesticides, and no herbicides. And the end product is tested to be sure that none of those things are happening to it. So there's some misinformation there, I believe, and, you know, it's the, you know, sky is falling kind of, you know, idea with that. So as far as that goes, you know, protecting the aquifer, it's a moot point, really, because those items are not used in the cultivation of medical marijuana.
Do you like my response? So, and, and you don't know about it than I do, and how that stuff is done, and I certainly respect that. That being the case, if a petitioner for an RMD wanted to oppose this bylaw and prove that they didn't have any toxic or hazardous materials, they can apply for, yeah, they can apply for a variance for it and easily be granted.
It's in the regulations.
Right.
They can't use those things, so...
Right. That being the case...
Just have it in the Massachusetts regulations.
So there's still an avenue for an applicant that doesn't have hazardous materials, namely one that doesn't have cultivation, for one, wouldn't have that at all, but there'd be an avenue to apply for a variance and to prove they don't have hazardous materials, and see if there'd be an issue with that variance. So that's the avenue we decided to choose, just to protect the water supply.
So a variance would be required if that remained in the, and how frequently a variance is granted, as far as that kind of thing goes?
We haven't had that yet, so no RMDs have tried to come to town here, or apply with the ZBA anyway.
So we have bylaws on the books right now. Did any of these issues come up where they presented before through any citizens or interested parties? You know, seeing this after the fact, I'm just not inclined to change anything that we already have on the books. We can do it on a case-by-case basis. I don't see the need to. This should have come up two years ago, in my opinion, and if it didn't, and if it went through the whole process, we can still go through a variance on this to fix it. I don't think there's any reason to change any of these, in my opinion.
So the first two, Matt, 9.3.13.2a and 9.3.13.2f, the applicant is requesting that we vote to remove the one-mile distance within them?
Yes.
And also to remove, what was the second one?
The aquifer restriction.
Restriction.
So, Mr. Chairman, the board has two options. You can either not vote, or you could vote to recommend the amendment to town meeting and vote to not recommend the amendment to town meeting. But before you, the board decides...
I think we should do either, recommend 2. Do we have a motion to recommend 2?
Public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Public comment? Is that Ken Wood? Yeah, is that Ken Wood?
I don't know.
Is it?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. No public comment? Okay, do we have a motion, either to not recommend them, to recommend not to approve to the town meeting?
I'll make the motion not to approve.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. 701 hearing, an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaws to amend Section 9.3.13.2c and 9.3.13.2i. Matt?
Sure, so, Mr. Chairman, these two sections, letter C, I'll start with that one, reads, "Currently that no RMD is to be located within 250 feet of any residential district. This amendment would change that to 100 feet, thus reducing the buffer zone by 150 feet from residential districts." As you can see just on this map, this is an unofficial map, you can see some dark purple on one side, and then some light purple on the other. The light purple indicates the 250-foot buffer from residential zones, and if that were to be removed, it would...
And they want to reduce it from 250 to...
To just 100 feet. But the RMDs closer to residences, or however you want to interpret it.
Okay.
The other, the other item, which was...
Aye.
I believe it's, I believe it's L.
I don't know, it's an L or an I.
It is an L, sir. So Section L reads that hours of operation for any RMD shall be established by the planning board, but in no event shall said facilities be open to the public between the hours of 8:00 P.M. and 8:00 A.M. The amendment would change that time to let them be open two hours later to 10:00 P.M. and not be open from 10:00 P.M. to 8:00 A.M.
Any public comment? Scott?
So changing the buffer zone, would that allow such businesses to operate on the other side of 20?
It very well could, yes. And that also applies to the other district, too. Just see it out, which would be on kind of the back, it doesn't really, Technologies. This is HB District on the opposite side of Route 12, and GI on the west side of Route 12. It mostly would impact the area that you pointed out.
Yeah. Torn on this one, I don't see much of a, how much impact it would be by changing it, but as Jason said, this has already been addressed two years ago, why are we trying to revisit this now? That's all I got.
John?
Wendy? The only other question I had, Matt, was it continues on, "An RMD must ensure that trees, bushes, and other foliage outside do not allow for persons to conceal themselves." What is the change there?
There is no change there. The only change was the 250 feet to 100 feet. They just cited the entire regulation.
Oh, okay, so this whole 9.3.1, 3.2 doesn't apply, L, Section L, except for the hours of operation?
L is just the hours, and C is just the 250 feet of residential...
All right, so we could just disregard the rest of that, both the bushes and all of that? Okay. All right, that's all we got.
Do we have a motion to approve, a recommendation to the town meeting, or to disapprove?
I'll make the motion to disapprove. This would be to not recommend to town.
To not recommend to town meeting. That the motion...
Make the motion.
Cannot recommend.
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. 702, we have an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaws to remove Section 9.3.13.2d and Section 9.3.13.2e. Matt?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, a motion to open.
A motion to open?
Make that motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we need a motion to, to open 701.
Make a motion to open 701?
Yes. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
You did 7 o'clock.
We also didn't close our 7 o'clock or 701.
Okay. Motion to close, 7 o'clock?
Make the motion to close, 7.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close, 701?
Make the motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll open 702.
Open 702.
Sorry. I don't know how busy the jet might be.
I know it, right?
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so, letter D in the same section for site conditions is that no RMD without cultivation operations shall have a gross floor area of less than 1,500 square feet or in excess of 7,499 square feet. Both of these amendments, Section D and Section E, are proposed to be removed entirely. Letter E would be that no RMD with cultivation shall have a gross floor area of less than 7,500 square feet or in excess of 50,000 square feet. The entire purpose of having this provision was to ensure that cultivation operations had to be sprinkled, because the threshold for building code is 7,500 square feet to make sure it has a sprinkler system. And the purpose of having a minimum of 1,500 square feet was to ensure that some of the pre-existing nonconforming residences in that district were not converted into RMDs, because those are less than 1,500 square feet. The threshold of 50,000 square feet, or in excess of 50,000 square feet, was to ensure that some of the larger warehouses in those districts would remain available for distribution companies to be able to come to Auburn. So a lot of thought went into those as well, but again, this is, I could see the point of trying to remove these, to try to allow them to use whatever size facility they require, but just, this was set up regarding what's in place already in the Town of Auburn.
So that we would contain it within 15 and 7,500?
Correct. For the, that's for, like a dispensary, and then anything over 7,500 to 50,000 square feet could be for cultivation. That's how it's been set up, that's how it was established in 2016, that this petition would be to remove those.
And they want to remove, that's what this is, for these two sections.
All right.
Jason? I mean, Scott?
Now, the 1,500 for pre-existing nonconformities, I could just see that as a security issue, and security is already probably going to be an issue for these dispensaries, so I'm not in favor of changing this.
Wendy?
What's that?
We have a motion.
Public comment.
A public comment.
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We need to vote.
I'll make a motion to not recommend the proposal.
To the town meeting. We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Ready? We have a 705 applicant, public hearing, Walter Coza requesting special permit under Section 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the creation of two hammerhead lots on property located at 109 and 111 Elm Street. Is the applicant present? Would you please come up and sit and state your name and address?
Before the team, if you might, if you do an open hearing, Scott?
Sure.
Sure, thank you. So what we have before us, Mr. Chairman, the board being inclined to take the motion over.
Make the motion to open the public hearing?
Make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So what we have before us today is a special permit application, this filed on March 21st of this year. This is to propose two hammerhead lots on backland in a residential C zoning district and a pre-existing house, existing dwelling on 109 Elm Street. I'll pull up the map shortly, but it's a special permit application for hammerhead lots, so it's our first hearing on the matter.
Okay, with the applicant, please state your name and address for the record.
Walter Coza, 82 Carlton Road, Millbury, Mass. Engineer.
George Smith.
Thank you.
Surveyor for the New England Lancer Bay.
Welcome to proceed.
Okay, so what we're proposing are two hammerhead lots, a front on Elm Street, they have a gentle slope, they are proposed two four-bedroom houses, and we show the proposed driveways coming in. We have a conventional lot, Lot 1, and that's mostly what we've perked, both of the lots, Lot 3 and 2, they both have acceptable perks, so we'd like to get permission to do these hammerhead lots.
So, general area. Okay, so, I believe this is the property here. Is this existing property?
Yes, that's, that's 109.
And the two driveways would be located along this side?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, just conducted a review on this project in accordance with our hammerhead lot provisions, chapter 5, and that's 5.3.2. I've come to the conclusion that this application meets all of the hammerhead lot requirements with the plan presented. I just had a handful of questions I just wanted to ask the applicant, if I may. Number one, had you noticed any wetlands on site, or is there any proximity to it?
It tends to get a little wet down in this area here, but no, it was nothing there.
Okay. So you mentioned you already did, you know, perks?
Yeah, we perked both. I personally, I'm a soz evaluated, I perked Lot 2.
You did 2?
And Lot 3 was already perked.
And you did 2, 2 passing perks?
Yes.
There's a 24 easement on the easternmost side of this? It's, I think it's off the property?
Yeah, that's on the other property. Right.
Just wanted to make sure it's entirely off the property.
It is, yeah, it's entirely off.
Do you happen to know what it's for?
It says utilities, I would imagine, you know, power, not really sure.
And...
Is that his property? No, that's his property. We have the...
I'm the abbot right next door.
Okay.
Matthew Glan.
Thank you, I'm sure, we may, we may ask you that in a minute, but that would be through the chairman's, thank you. So proposed well and septic locations, have you come up with anything like that yet?
We didn't put those on here, but we are currently working. Phil has put in that.
I saw a radius for, I think, existing well, existing lot, is that what that is?
Yeah, we have 100 foot for the abbot, or 100 foot for Lot 1.
Okay.
And then the abbot to the right also.
Okay. Does, is it, did you, is there existing septic on the 109?
There isn't, yeah, oh, yeah.
So there's a front of the house, right?
Yes.
Okay. And did you happen to contact the town assessor to see what the new address is, might feature these lots?
No, we didn't.
Okay, that's great. All right, thank you. That's the only questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Scott, any questions? John? Wendy?
No.
Jason?
No.
Any public comment? There being none, do we have a motion?
Make the motion to approve the plan?
Second.
Make a motion to close. I mean, I meant, I mean, we need a motion to close the meeting.
I know.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. We have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the plan?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Just want to go through conditions, Mr. Chairman.
What's that, conditions?
Should be, I assume we were approving with conditions, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Chairman, upon my review, I concluded that the proposal meets all the special permit findings consistent with the neighborhood character, site distance, environmental compatibility, employment, fiscal consequences, consists with the master plan, impact on educational facilities, all the special permit requirements. So for conditions, I would recommend that the special permit be recorded at the registry, and only becomes valid after it's recorded at the registry. It should comply with all applicable special permit requirements as outlined in Section 9.3, skip item number 3. Special permit shall lapse if proposed use or its construction is not commenced except for good cause within a period of 36 months. The applicant shall abide by all approvals and conditions of state agencies, town boards, departments, and commissions, and construction hours. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I know it's a closed hearing, but I'd like to ask the abbot, is there a school bus route, or a school bus pickup anywhere near this site?
Well, we're about, probably 300 feet north up street from here, from my kids.
Okay.
Because since the Auburn lines right there, the buses...
Got it. Okay. That's what I thought, just wanted to ask, thank you.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, I wouldn't be opposed to moving up the construction hours to a seven-tarry start on Monday through Friday, and Saturday, seven-tarry, I don't know.
Scott?
And...
Followed up.
John?
I don't follow with you, I just got one more question.
There are lots to be developed in accordance with approved plan, and they should, shall submit a 24-by-36 as well plan once the construction is completed.
John, you okay?
I just got one question. You said you recently perked tested 2, and Lot 3 was previously perked tested?
Yes.
How previously was Lot 3 perked tested?
Two years, two years ago.
It'll be good for two years. It's got to be reperked.
I think we're just coming up on, it's maybe August of this year. Yeah.
You don't perk test it in August, that's not true. You only perk test it in March.
Either way, if it, through the chair, if it has to be reperked, are you doing that with the border health?
Right.
So, those are the conditions I recommend, Mr. Chairman.
Wendy?
Good.
Okay.
Okay. So I will draft a decision, it will be available for the board members to sign at their next meeting, and then, once it's signed, come pick up the decision at the town clerk's office after the appeal period. It's a 21-day appeal period, and once the appeal period passes, take this to be recorded at the registry of deeds. And once it's recorded, you cite the recording book and page reference on A&R Plan and resubmit to the planning board for their signature. So if any questions about that, just contact me at Town Hall.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I want to count the folks out in the hallway and see how many people are here for this, and then we don't have to move next door. It's a good strategy.
Have a motion for a three-minute recess?
Make the motion for a three-minute recess?
Second?
Aye.
We have a 710 public hearing, the applicant is Central One Federal Credit Union, requesting site plan approval under Section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the development of a new member cell center facility on property at 20 to 30 Elmwood Street. This hearing was continued from March 27th, 2018, per the applicant's request. Have a motion to open the public hearing?
You can, you don't need it, but you can.
You don't need it.
Let's continue here.
Okay. Matt?
Yeah?
Sure.
So... So, we have today with Central One, and it's been a little while since, since we had our last presentation in the selectmen room. We've now received peer review comments, we've received updated plans. Some of the main things that have been changed on the plan will be addressed by the applicants, I'm sure. I could rattle them off, but you guys will anyways. But it's just, this being, I believe, either our second or only third hearing, and a string of continuances as well. So, this is a site plan approval application, this is not an approver-to-not situation, this is a regulation on site design through, through the planning board. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn over the applicant.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
For the record, my name is Brian Beaton, and I'm attorney for Central One. And with me tonight are several members from our design team, which you may recall, James Tatro, the civil engineer, Greg O'Connor, our project architect, Bob Michaud behind me, who's our traffic consultant, and we also have attended several members from Central One, if anyone introduced themselves.
Bill Hamilton, Director of Facilities.
Mike Rooney, CFO.
Dave Leckery, CEO.
Kaiser AGP of Reach Out Services.
If I may, if you guys have business cards, Rachel started yesterday.
That'd be great.
Use your names, that'd be helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if it's helpful, I could just maybe, it's been a while, as you said, I can recap the project for the benefit of everyone. As you may recall, it's been several months now since we were before you on the site plan application. We are here again for site plan review, as Matt said. We are also requesting as part of our site plan several waivers, which we'll get into and just recap, we announced those at the first hearing. Just to step back, this is the Central One proposed member center, which is located on a parcel, a narrow parcel, the intersection with Elmwood and Southbridge Street. This is adjacent to the existing branch, which you're all well aware of, along Southbridge Street. This is a center that will be used by Central One for business operations. It is something that is not open to the public by and large, but again, as for their employees, and to provide services to the underlying Central One operation, business operation. As far as the relief, again, it's site plan approval, but also three waivers, and landscape waivers pursuant to section 11.3 regarding the minimum buffer widths, and also the minimum planting requirements. Section 11.53A and 11.53B dealing with landscape islands, and also the landscape strips, rather, and we'll get into the landscaping again, just to recap that, because we are proposing extensive landscaping, including saving as many existing trees as possible, but also planting 47 new trees. If you may recall, last time, the biggest, if I could just call it that, or the attention getter with respect to the design was the access to and from the site. We sat back and listened during the hearings, and comments from the planning board, comments from many of the people that are probably in the audience this evening, and the concern that we heard was access to Elmwood Street, leaving and entering the site. And some concerns were raised about that, so we stepped back, we brought onboard Mr. Michaud, who's a traffic consultant, to help us evaluate the site, answer some questions that came up during that hearing. Bob prepared a report for us, and came to several conclusions about our new design, which is accessing the site, both egress and ingress, from Southbridge Street. And Bob's findings were that our proposed site now will generate, because we wanted to step back, take our time, analyze the situation, and put forth a design that we felt comfortable with after a lot of work, a lot of meetings with the design team, peer review was very helpful, MAST DOT, to come back to you and make sure we took our time, and had a plan that we felt was a very solid design that reflects a lot of the comments that were raised, and a lot of the changes to the site that resulted. So, Bob will, with respect to traffic, entering and leaving the site, he will get into more analysis, but will tell you that it's going to generate modest trip generation. The sightlines from the new entrance and exit comply with ASHTO standards, and then also there'll be no material impact to the operating condition of Southbridge Street as a result of this project, because those are some questions that were raised during that last hearing. So, if I could just tell you a little bit about what is, what has changed with the design, and what has remained. The biggest change, obviously, is the access, and it's now both from and coming off of Southbridge Street. Now, you will notice that there is an emergency access, if I could just point to it. Right here. Onto Elmwood Street, and I know that will generate some interest, and people will ask, well, are employees going to use that to enter and leave the site at the conclusion of the workday? And the answer to that is no, that will be gated, there will be no access from that. That is, the fire department raised some issues about being able to get vehicles to and from the site, so that is the reason why you see that emergency access. Again, just to summarize, that is not going to be used by employees entering and exiting the site, it's gated. Landscaping, so the size of the building and the height of the building, nothing has changed with respect to the size or the height of the building, the number of parking spaces has remained the same, but...
They've gone down to 95.
That's right, to 95, originally it was 97. We have 95 spots now. You also, if you remember, there were questions, the challenges with drainage and soils, we, those were the challenges that we faced in terms of creating access, and they were in fact challenging, and that's part of the reason why we took our time to make sure, again, involving the traffic, entering and exiting, by collectively working with DOT, peer review, Mr. Michaud coming onboard, and we were able to make that site access work. So, with that, I think what I'd like to do is turn it over to Bob, who will give you an overview of the traffic analysis, and substantiate some of the things that I've said, and provide some backup, and maybe a little more detail, just to give you a comfort level about cars entering and exiting the location.
Great, thank you, board members, for the record. Robert Michaud, Managing Principal, MDM Transportation Consultant. So, what our firm did was really to go out and measure baseline travel speeds, sightlines, and traffic volumes to understand those conditions, and assessing what the access needs of the property would be. We understood the concerns that were expressed during the early planning stages on access via Elmwood Street, a concern that we really took to heart, and took our time to, to have conversations, relevant conversations with DOT, to understand their, you know, buy-in, if you will, for Route 12 access, standard commercial access. Ultimately, those discussions led to just that, that it is in fact viable to have a standard commercial driveway on Southbridge Street, and to have it designed in a way that meets all of the applicable safety-based and operational criteria that any other commercial driveway would be obligated to do on state highway. What we've discovered through that process, and what we've documented in the study, is that Southbridge Street carries about 9,000 vehicles per day, it's an arterial roadway, and in this particular stretch of Southbridge Street, which is straight, flat, and has ample sightlines, that the posted regulatory speed limits range from 40 to 45 miles an hour, depending on travel direction, and that the, the measured travel speeds in that area, which we're done using industry-standard means, radar recorder devices in particular, indicate that 85%, or the 85th percentile driver is actually complying with that speed limit. It doesn't mean that people don't go faster than that, it means that the 85th percentile of all of the vehicles that travel along Southbridge Street are in fact complying with those, those guidelines, with those regulatory requirements. And on that basis, the design of a driveway where it's shown on the current plan can meet all of the applicable sightline criteria, which are between 300 and 400 feet of clear visibility, either approaching or departing the driveway. We in fact have more than 500 feet in either direction. We also know that during peak hours, the traditional commuter hours, that there are about 1,000 vehicles per hour that are using that road, and that speaks to the potential operating aspects of the driveway. We've conducted an assessment to determine how much delay, and whether queuing would or would not occur as a result of having a commercial driveway along that section of Southbridge Street. And that analysis, which we've shared with DOT, indicates that there will be no additional delays introduced, or queuing introduced, on Southbridge Street, that the ability for a vehicle to make a left turn in, or a right turn into this driveway will be unimpeded, will not result in a queue on Route 12. And likewise, particularly in the evening, when someone is attempting to make a turn from the driveway, they'll have the opportunity to turn left from a designated left-turn lane, or a designated right-turn lane. There'll be separate lanes exiting, each of which has the ability to store at least one, actually two vehicles as part of a queue, if necessary. The analysis that we've done, again, reviewed by DOT, indicates that there'll be very little delay on making those turns, about 10 to 20 seconds on average of delay for making, in particular, a left turn, the more difficult it is turns, with a queue that's about one or no more than two vehicles deep. So operationally, this is found to be acceptable as well, and we know that this particular stretch of road does not exhibit any particular safety deficiency, this is another aspect of what we looked at, and we know that the project team has reached out to the local police department to understand the crash experience in and around this area. There were no noted crashes along the front edge, if you will, of the property, there were some, but very few, crashes located at the Elmwood intersection, not classified as a high-crash location by DOT standards, and of course is not being relied on for access at this point under the current design. So our conclusions are that, you know, we find that the driveway meets all of the applicable standards and criteria, will meet the needs of this particular property, and quite frankly, won't have any operational, negative operational impact to Southbridge Street or its surrounding roadways. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I have a couple. Thank you, very informative, it was very helpful.
Thank you.
It's almost like you memorized this thing.
I wrote it.
So, two questions came up for it. The time period for data collection, when was, when was the study done?
Yeah, we collected data in January of this year. We used a radar recorder device which collected data over a 24-hour period, so we've got hourly volumes for that entire 24-hour period. It was during a weekday period, it was not a Monday or a Friday, it was a midweek period. And we also had the benefit of actually spot counting those, the intersection of Elmwood Street, actually, to verify those results. In the course of doing the study, it's important to note, and I talked to the operational aspects of the driveway, we actually, during the analysis, project out seven years from the count date, right? That's a DOT requirement. So we actually project out to a seven-year design horizon, using a growth rate factor. So we're taking the volumes that we collected in January, we're seasonally adjusting those to represent an average condition, using DOT correction factors, and then we're adding to that seven years of growth, and then we're adding on any trips that are associated with the proposed use. So what we presented here is not just taking a snapshot of today's condition, it's actually looking forward to account for, for growth.
And one more question, Mr. Chairman. Did you guys do a study on the former entrance, and was that proven to be far more...
The issues with the former, the use of Elmwood Street had to do with the alignment of the street, which we did discuss with DOT, the sightline restrictions that that imposes because of the angle of that approach of Elmwood Street, you've got to kind of crank your neck very far left to be able to see an oncoming vehicle. And, and so that, for that reason, was not viewed to be optimal, and we know that it certainly provides an access to the neighborhood street system that, quite frankly, if we could avoid using it or adding traffic to it, would be the ideal situation, which is ultimately what we're proposing. Thank you.
Scott, any questions?
No questions, no.
John?
No.
Wendy?
No questions.
Jason?
None.
Any public comment?
Before we get to public comment, can I just...
We have plenty more.
Except for on the plan.
We had several months to prepare.
Yes. I didn't memorize anything, though. And I, first of all, James Tatro, Civil Engineer from Thompson Listen Associates, and if you remember back at the last meeting, I was the guy telling you, I don't think we can connect to Southbridge Street because I don't think the drainage will work. And so I want to address that, why are we saying now that it can't? And the answer is that, we spoke to the town's peer reviewer, and we, before we got anywhere near to putting this plan together, and we said, look, there's a lot of sentiment here about trying to make the connection be Southbridge Street rather than Elmwood Street. I said, and here's what I see as my problem, I said, I don't see how I can get the drainage over here, normally I said, but what we came up with as a way to deal with the drainage was to, first of all, to capture everything possible before you're dropping down into that last, the driveway entrance onto Southbridge Street itself, and then at the end of the, the edge of the state highway layout to install a slot drain, pick up the runoff in this portion of the driveway here with that slot drain, direct it to an infiltration over here. So that was one sort of exceptional design element, and the other is that we reviewed with the, the town's peer reviewer, the infiltration area here. Now normally, if you're, if you're filing a noticement, you're asked to, can you, can you achieve a four-foot separation from seasonal high groundwater to the bottom of your infiltration structure, whatever it is, be it chambers, or just stone, or whatever it is. And there's some allowance, if you show them groundwater mounding calculations, can you go down to two feet? And in this instance, we were getting closer than that, and we reviewed with the, the town's peer reviewer, I said, look, here's what we want to do, we can pick up the runoff here at a certain elevation, we can get it over to here, and we could, we would be at a certain elevation, and what the peer reviewer asked for is groundwater mounding calculations, confirming that, that we don't have, you know, four feet of separation here, that the separation from seasonal high groundwater to the bottom of the infiltration system would be adequate. It's not, it's not a, it's not a, you know, it's nothing like four feet, but this is not a lot of water either. And so what we did is, had worked a little bit of an iterative process with the town's peer reviewer to try and come up with a design that he could sign off, and he could live with, that we could live with, and that would allow us to capture runoff before, for a access onto Southbridge Street, and not have to make any connection to MAST DOT's sacred state highway layout, where they don't want you to make any, any piped connection. So, that's the difference from what we presented you before, we really are using sort of two somewhat exceptional design elements, a slot drain to capture runoff as it's going down the driveway about to get into the state highway layout, and a lesser separation of the bottom of the infiltration system from groundwater, again, reviewed and confirmed for groundwater mounding is not an issue with the town's peer reviewer. And utilizing both of those design elements, this becomes a reasonable choice. And from the previous design, really, the north end of this parking area is really is pretty much the same as previously proposed, with the exception that we remove one space here, and you have the gate here, which is going to be, the gate is going to have a 24-foot span with two 12-foot arms that lock in the middle, and as, as Brian was saying, you know, this is, this is going to be locked, this is not going to be open for employees to use, it's not going to be an optional access, although I think I want to go this way, I'm going up to, to Worcester. No, that's, that's not going to be an option for, for any employees, it's going to be locked with the fire and, and police having keys to it. And, but the building is in exactly the same...
So I just want to interrupt you for a second.
Do you mind angling that so these folks can see? Oh, sorry. It's just, sorry, it's the same plane as you're seeing on the, on the TV screen.
It's just when you're pointing to it, you know, they want to be...
No problem. But again, as, as Brian said, the, the building is exactly the same footprint, has not moved. The one difference is, where previously, because of the way the parking layout was set up, and because we were coming off an area with a grade of about 506 here, instead of coming off an area of South... off an area of Southbridge Street with an equator of about 497, where before, the parking lot, you walked up to almost the, the upper level of the structure, now you're going to enter actually just about at the lower level. So that's a change that was made to allow this layout to happen. A lot of additional minor changes were made to, to show some respect to the, there was again, along with the sentiment of not wanting to have a connection to Elmwood Street, there was a lot of sentiment to try and keep the trees on the property independently of each other. The project architect and I both went out to the site and looked at and made notes of where exactly, we saw that there were significant trees to save, and there's an area over here, opposite a guy wire pole, there's especially an area opposite almost the intersection of Preston Ave. And on Southbridge Street, beyond one particular pole, there are a lot of significant trees. And we put in retaining walls and shaped the grading in those areas specifically to try and allow them to keep as many of those trees as possible. And the initial plan, I think as Brian said, proposed 31 trees to be planted on the site. Now that was up to 47, and even the, I think the town's peer reviewer called the provision of plantings generous in his review. But I'm not sure what else I should say. We, you know, the drainage was reviewed by the town's peer reviewer of Graves Engineering. He has had no issues now with the last refinement of things, and I don't believe there are any other issues. I think you just had a, he had a couple of quibbles with the landscape planting. One was, I think there was one, really just a typo of the planting list on the landscape plan, of one particular shrub which had been changed to another one, and the plant list didn't reflect that the number of that first type of shrub had gone down. And there was, as Brian's mentioned, we're asking for a waiver from the buffer width requirement, and that was, again, was cited by the peer reviewers. The board will have to decide if the board finds this acceptable. I'll try and answer any questions.
On the sight lighting, you have it maintained at zero at the property line?
Yes.
So hard to read these.
It actually gets, you adjust it a little bit into Elmwood Street, I'll, I, gosh, I don't have it. There's a, there's a small area, I think it's over here where it gets into Elmwood, oh, this light, gets into Elmwood Street itself, but it doesn't get past the middle of the pavement. But other than that, it is within the.
Just one light?
That one light here, because it's, yes.
But all the others are zero at the property line?
Yes. And there are eight lights, they're 14 feet high, they're all going to be a downward-facing light LED, and again, the photometric plan was done using those lights with that height to determine whether there would be any light pollution off the property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To the chair, there were also requests for some shorter lights as needed, like the little baller fixtures that you show on the light.
Oh, yes, I didn't even think of that, yeah.
Do you mind pointing out where those would be located?
They're going to be, I don't know if you should do that, here or here?
They stand over here, and then they can point ahead of it.
Okay. They're going to be at the entrance to the building over here.
Okay. Okay, and then the 14 footers would be?
Yeah, 14 footers, there are eight one-armed lights, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I don't get the count. There are eight of, eight of the one-armed lights, there's a two-armed light here in the median island proposed. That's the only one of those.
Further more through the chair, these aren't going to be like high-pressure sodium bulbs, these are going to be LEDs?
LEDs, yeah. And it's actually called out on the, on the lighting plan itself. Yes. Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on the peer review letter from April 9th that we received from Craig. And going through it, and having received it yesterday, and I didn't have the ability to confirm some of the ones that were, that were still, I'll call it outstanding, but some of them I just circled just for discussion purposes, just so everyone can hear some of these things. But it was one thing that listed that there's no solid waste storage container listed on site, because the, he put in quotes, he said, that the waste will be removed by hand. I would assume that this is a sensitive material, like an Iron Mountain kind of company that's going to be taking materials off the site.
It's the cleaning, it's the cleaning company that does the work, they take the daily stuff. We're shredding most of it.
Right.
In the contacts of the building.
So, and just to confirm, there's no dumpster pad, there's no dumpster, that's going to be fenced in or anything like that as a result, so, thank you. Said, no storage areas, it was the number 14, said, no storage areas were not shown on the plans, but this was told that the northmost four parking spaces will be used for snow storage until the building reaches full occupancy. If you just mind pointing those out.
Sure. The spaces over here, actually the ones closest to the gated access off of Elmwood Street, as, as Mr. Leckley has said before, the sizing of this parking area is to, is to be able to accommodate the expected eventual growth. At the initial opening of the site, there won't be nearly enough, nearly as many employees as would need 95 spaces. And so it'll be convenient to, to stack snow if necessary at those spaces there. The one furthest away, which would be the least desirable, no one's going to walk 500 feet when they can walk 50.
Will that block that emergency access?
No, because you've got a 36 by 20 area here that is outside of the 24-foot wide driving aisle. So it doesn't need to block, and overflow onto that is, onto a grassed area over the infiltration stream.
And when you're utilizing all 95, you'll probably have to do removal.
And, yes, and that's the perfect segue, is what Central One has done on their other properties, is they, they remove and truck snow from sites. And that will be the eventual process that will, will be utilized, but not initially when they don't need nearly all these spaces, and especially the ones most distant.
I just had a few more, just on the peer review. So back to the landscape piece, where they did say, landscape provided is generous, it's actually there. It also reads that there were three items, three buffers that are required, and I believe that the waivers are requested, might already address these things.
Yes.
But I just wanted to elaborate on what they were a little bit, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. The zoning law that calls out different widths of buffer if you're adjacent to a different type of zoning district. And there's a type A buffer if you're adjacent to a residential zoning district. There's actually a zoning district line running down the middle of Elmwood Street that separates this property and highway business from the Elmwood Street residences that are in, residential or is that the title?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, well, this is surrounded, really. You have highway business for this property.
Yeah.
General industry across the street.
Across the street, right.
And then residential laid behind it, so.
And what the buffer require, asks for is a certain width of buff, of planted buffer, and calls for a certain number of trees. And we're not, we won't achieve that 25-foot width when you're adjacent to a residential buffer, and we think we may actually be achieving the total number of trees if every individual existing tree to remain were to be counted, and we admit that ambiguity, but we're asking for a waiver from the depth of buffer, and so we will, though it might not be needed, ask for a waiver from that, the provision also of specifically a certain number of trees. But we will be planting, again, 47 trees total between the Elmwood Street side and the Southbridge Street side, to try and, and achieve as much buffer as possible. And again, we revised the, I'll go over this board, the grading in a few areas with bigger retaining walls and returns toward the street at the ends of them, specifically in order to try and keep significant existing trees in this area and in this area, and we're also going to do what we can off of the, the Southbridge Street side. But obviously, that's not as, as much of a priority. But I would, I would also remind the board that just the grades here, for instance, if you go to the middle of the parking lot here, the grade here is 503 in the parking lot, and Elmwood Street here is at 506. So any car here is a few feet down from the road above, and even further down from the folks on the other side of the road. And that's the case through, through much of this, where you're pretty close here, but again, here you're at 503 versus 509. So much of this parking lot is going to be recessed below the grade of Elmwood Street itself.
And the waiver section contemplates unusual lots, which I would think is, for a situation like this to provide flexibility. Obviously, we've got a very narrow lot, so that's section 11.9, I think, was really designed for lots like this, so.
Hey, to the chair, I agree, I have yet to see a property that covered all three landscape buffers, and this one does. So that was unique in itself. The next item in my head, Mr. Chairman, was item 20, it was about a fire hydrant utility pole existing.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to point out where that is.
Sure. Actually, if you're still on the landscape plan, what the reviewer was talking about is, we, the landscape plan showed the existing fire hydrant here, which we actually proposed to move, and somehow the proposed move location 35 feet away, it was not shown at. And he's just noting that it should have come up on here, on here, that it's, again, approximately this location. And there was a note that this, actually this particular tree is not a full 10 feet from the proposed light to the, to the north of it. It was seven or eight feet, I think it is. So it's just a matter of pushing this tree a couple feet away. No, no real big deal to that.
Okay, thank you. Item 22 addressed the soil report that you guys provided us today.
Yeah.
Mentioned that.
You know, he asked for something that I've never been asked for before. He's, he's a very particular reviewer.
That's what I like.
There's a, there's a provision deep within the bowels of a particular regulation that asks for, says, and you should, also, you should insert this particular soils report which you can get from an online website, NRCS, Natural Reservoirs Conservation Service website. And I, I've seen that box on these forms a thousand times, but I, the first one who said, why don't you give me that too, even though we, again, we had pointed out on other plans what the soils are on site, and shown where the boundary is, and, so we got Jeff that report.
He did provide it, and our consultant confirmed today, just before the end of the day, that he had received it, and the information supports the modeling that's provided, so he was happy with that item. So, I'll pass forward to item 36, this talks about number of annual perennials ground cover listed on the table. Minor discrepancies that should be addressed nonetheless. Talking about plantings, trees, total of shrubs, total labeled on the plans, et cetera. I mean, this is, I just bring it up because it's outstanding, but it could be listed as a conditional.
Yeah, we would be perfectly happy with that being as a condition. Primarily, it's a matter of among the shrubs, and I've never heard of this before, the landscape architect is calling, was, in the listing of plants, called for 15 plantings of something called a Sunburst St. John's Wort. And if you looked at the actual plan, which is a little tough to do, and found every single example of that, you actually found in not 15 as in the list, but six. And I talked to the landscape architect, and said, oh, I changed some of those, I must not have gone back and changed the 50. But it's, he said, it's not that big of a deal to put in nine more of those, if the board, to alleviate any discrepancy or correct any discrepancy, would ask that we adhere to the quantities of the plant list as a condition of, of an approval, we would be perfectly happy with that.
So, Mr. Chairman, that, that was a peer review dated yesterday, but, I mean, 44 comments, the ones I mentioned were the only ones that were outstanding, but seemed to be addressed. But the board should still discuss the idea on the waivers, and if they, like the grant waivers, the landscape requirement, you know, provided that applicant has provided generous amounts of landscaping and other aspects, although it's not consistent with the bylaw, and they are asking for waivers for it, and provide what I believe to be copious amounts of landscaping as an alternative.
Any questions, Jason?
Scott.
Scott. John? Wendy?
No sound.
Jason? You want to continue? Anything else?
I think that's the conclusion.
Take questions from the.
Any public comment? Can you state your name, please, and address?
Yes, Dave Lake, 33 Field Street. You talked about the depth for the residential buffer typically was 25, you're seeking a waiver. What's your, what's your, you know, average or, or minimum depth that you're looking at, that you actually have?
Yeah, I, I think it's closer to 10 feet because, because it's measured from the property line. Now, in practice, if you count the existing vegetation that is specifically in, for instance, in this area off of, off of Preston Ave, opposite Preston Ave, you're really looking at more like 20 feet being there. Just confirm that, I don't want to say that number and have it, yeah, it's, it's closer to 20 feet in this area if you count that. And again, we've made, propose additional retaining walls and higher retaining walls and returns on the ends, try and not do any grading so we can keep all the significant existing trees in that area.
It would give them a better chance to survive.
Yes.
Knowing that the depth of the wall is designed to do that, is one of the kinds of things that we have been asking for, so that's, I think.
We, we heard that at the, at the meeting, again, as I say, in addition to the concern about the traffic and the access point, that we wanted to keep all the vegetation and keep the buffer.
One of the things that some of the neighbors who live directly across the street were particularly concerned about is lighting. That people find that the existing lighting is pretty bright, but it's not like, on the, on the branch, but not, it's not really positioned in a way that's, you know, making that much of an impact for that many houses. But with this, with this lighting, I do recall that at some point it had been suggested to go with more four or six footers, I know you've got some near the building. Was that something that you would explore in terms of, instead of the 14 footers, because you're going to see the glare from the house across the street, even though you won't have measurable foot candles, you're still going to, going to tend to, tend to see that. Is, is that something you were able to explore, or did you have to rule that out because shorter lights was going to be a hassle?
I, I, yeah, I mean, a four or six foot light just isn't going to work to light a parking lot, that's just simple physics, okay? You have to have some height to get the throw. We would have 60 lights in the parking lot if they were four feet high, you know, we'd have one every other space. So the, the, the actual reality of it is, you need a pole that's about that height to be able to properly light the parking lot. You can't really get much lower than, than that and properly light a parking lot, to have a safe parking lot. And the foot candle levels, we've dropped them down so that, you know, you get zero going off the lot, so, I mean, it's not lit up like a car dealership. It's not that kind of light level.
Yeah, understood.
So it's, it's as subtle as we can go with the lighting levels.
Thank you, sir, for that explanation. I expected that was probably the case, but I just thought that it would be helpful for the neighbors nearby to understand that that wasn't necessarily something very feasible, especially where your landscaping is on the sides, not in the middle, you know, which makes it more challenging, but that's part of how you're keeping the buffer that we're looking for.
The other thing is, not every one of those lights will be on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so that's the other thing to take into account too.
The retaining walls that you have?
Yep.
Now, the way that they're, they're positioned, are, are some of those going to be significantly higher than what you originally talked about? I think that, I saw somewhere in the plans that some of them might be as high as eight feet.
That's not the case. We, before, we're trying to limit the walls to being under four feet, four feet is often a threshold whereby you go from, you go to having to have a stamped structural engineer approved design. And so we were trying to initially to stay under that height. Six foot high here, and the long stretch almost opposite Preston Ave, and maybe this is five foot high. Yes, five foot high in the stretch over here.
But those are not for the entire length of the wall, because these walls will step with the grade, so that's a maximum.
Good point.
Would there be some kind of, of fence on the Elmwood side enough to warn people for, for falling off?
Yeah, yeah, it's, back right here is the big note, proposed four-foot high chain lamp safety fence, proposed four-foot high chain lamp safety fence. That was a specific request of the peer reviewer.
Again, these are all great things, and I think it's helpful for people in the neighborhood that have been concerned about this, to see that you've done so much to try and make this plan park. A lot of us would like to have a smaller building and, you know, store your, your records on microfiche or something. records on microfiche or something, but, you know, you were running the business, and we can't tell you how to run your business. So, thank you for, you know, taking the time to explain these things to us and for trying to make this a safer and better thing for the neighborhood than it was to begin with.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Chuck Miller, 34 Arlington Street. I appreciate the effort that's been made to mitigate the traffic that's going through the residential areas. I just want to make a note of, this morning, there was an accident on 290 eastbound. And I know these guys can't control that. Traffic in that area was horrendous. I'm glad I didn't have another hundred cars to contend with.
Anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jessica Harris. I live at 21 Elmwood. I just wanted to ask if there was any kind of regulation on the lighting overnight, if there was a certain time they would be shut off and turned back on. I know that's season dependent, but...
I can answer that. So, we do have a bylaw for that? Lights have to be reduced to security lighting within 30 minutes after close of business. So, the same thing for when you're opening. They can be turned on earlier than 30 minutes prior to opening.
They'll be on, but they'll be reduced.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes, just one more. It's kind of in the same vein. You talked about the buffering, and my recollection of the property directly across from Preston and just north of that, in that area, there is that, you know, lovely colonial right directly across the street. That's also an area where the land, for the first 10 or 15 feet, tends to slope up quite a bit. So, you're going to get still more of a buffer. The trees are at a higher level, above the street level. You referenced the difference that the parking lot is going to be six or eight feet below the street level of Elmwood. Going to have still some more buffering in that area. And again, the efforts to try to save the trees is going to help to make that, hopefully, that buffer more effective and help to showcase that little gem that we have that gives our neighborhood a little more character as being kind of a rural space as soon as you get off the surface of the street.
And to piggyback on that comment, for instance, if you're in an area where, if, trying to find one of the lights right away, if you're in an area where you're, for instance, right here, your grade of the parking lot is four feet below the grade of Elmwood Street, then that 14-foot-high light is actually just 10-foot-high relative to the road.
Stole my question.
I'm sorry. There was one more that's important. We heard that the house is not going to be destroyed, but instead moved to it being adjacent to that. Possible.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Still only a possibility?
Yeah. If I may, I just, it's not part of this application. If you'd like to ask me a question about that outside of the meeting, I'd be happy to answer it. But, you're, you're right on that.
Sounds like good news.
Yeah.
Again, you know, something that you're, where you're working with the neighborhood. We appreciate that.
Scott?
What's up?
John? Wendy?
All set.
Jason?
Good.
And there's no further public comment?
Anything else?
Nothing from that applicant? Okay. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion.
Were there waivers in this motion?
There were three waivers.
So, the three waivers requested pursuant to Section 11.9, or for the landscaping sections. This was 11.5.3, letter A. It's a continuous landscape strip or pedestrian path must be provided between every front row of parking. As we can imagine, that would make plowing impossible on a property like this. So, that seems totally reasonable to me. 11.5.3, letter B. Planting islands must be provided at the ends of each parking row. Another issue with snow removal, for sure. And 11.3 was the minimum width of buffer zones, as mentioned before, where a residential zone needed 25 feet, we're requesting them will allow 10 feet. And the grade change certainly makes that...
Huge.
Yeah. Makes that a lot more easier to swallow.
Can I speak?
Yes.
For waiver 11.3, I think it's buffer widths and minimum planting materials. Does that consider as two separate parts of that waiver? Was the table 11.3 that had the...
Oh, correct. Yeah, that being the table being slightly different.
I don't know. Not the split hairs.
Either way, if it's, the board can still take a vote to envelope all the waivers.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the waivers. Any questions from you, Scott, John, Wendy, Jason?
Make a motion to accept the waivers?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
For a vote on projects.
Do we have a motion to approve the project?
Motion to approve the project with conditions?
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep our fingers crossed. Thank you.
All right. So, through the chair, I'm just going to decide the conditions on the last application for Central One, and our standard conditions for site plan approval or construction hours.
So, are you proposing 7:30 again?
It's up to the board. Now, this one directly blocks residential neighborhoods, construction projects on both sides.
We leave them like this and then adjust them each time?
We can adjust the standard conditions at any time. They just need to let me know, and I'll provide you with new amendments. It's just...
No, I mean...
We can change the working hours in town.
Absolutely.
I propose we do 7 to 3:30, because that's the standard construction day. 8 to 4:30, 70s. That's long gone.
Yeah, we should do whatever standard is. And we'll have less exceptions if we do that at some point.
Correct. I mean, if you're next to a school, obviously, or something like that, we'd have to make an exception. Most towns are 7 to 3.
And what do you think on Saturday, John?
8 to 12.
Still keep that, keep that one.
Yep.
I don't mind if it's even 7 to 4 during Monday through Friday.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Agreed.
Yeah, change it to 7 to 4, Monday through Friday, and 8, leave it 8 to 12 on Saturday.
Okay. And then the rest of the conditions would apply. That's all conditions 1 through 6, because this property is located in the Asian lawn or beetle quarantine area. Site lighting standards should apply. Submit an ASBIL plan when it's finished, held in accordance with the plan, and abide by all approvals conditions as stated in Sees Town Ward's Departments and Commissions. I do have one additional condition I'd like to add, and that's to ensure that the Auburn Fire Department and Police Department receive an access key to the emergency gate.
I like that you make a proposal for all those. Should be one lockbox, one key.
Yeah, there should be a lock. I think they...
We're going to have a fire department, we're going to build a fire...
The fire department generally, this is the kind of box you probably know it as. There's a box they're probably going to ask them to put on site.
Yeah, they should be on site.
It's like a real estate lockbox.
I don't know what's, I can't remember what it's called, but...
Super.
You would know.
Standardize them. Just have, like you said, one key for all of them, have the same key. Who's going to come and break in? I mean, nobody.
So, those seven conditions are what I recommend. Unless there's opposition.
Sounds good.
I'll draft those for the next meeting, and it should be available for signature. There's no appeal period. So, once a signature is signed, once the decision is signed, let me stamp the town clerk, be ready to go.
Okay, we have a 7:20 public hearing. Applicant is Mark Mallett, requesting a special permit under Section 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to create a hammerhead lot for a new single-family residence on property located at 161 to 165 South Street. This public hearing has been continued from March 27th at the request of the applicant. Is the applicant present?
Who are you?
Jeremy from D.C. Engineering. Mr. Chairman, we have this hammerhead lot project. One hammerhead lot being proposed behind a existing house at number 165 South Street, which is on our first agenda. Just a little history on the project, just to reiterate again. This was originally a hammerhead lot proposal approved in 2012 with an earthfill special permit. The project did not proceed as originally planned, and eventually expired, so it's back to force today as a hammerhead lot application submission. The lot layout has some minor amendments to it, but otherwise, just through, there were some amendments asked at our last meeting, and I'll defer to the applicant at this time. And then, after the applicant's presentation, excuse me, I'll go into the requirements of the hammerhead lot bylaw.
All right. I think what we left off with last time was, we needed some extra top oak, I guess, where the reserved septic area was done. That is shown. And then, we also had a decision from the building inspector that that setback needed to be 20 feet, and that was really what the hangup was. I mean, needed to be 40 feet, and we had it at 20. And since, actually, Andy's talked to the building inspector and gotten it back down to the 20 feet. So, keeps it farther away from the wetlands and everything. Let's do what works out better. I think that was pretty much it with the special permit part of it.
So, through the chair, I just want to show where those two things are on the plan. So, the areas that didn't have topography was the southern piece here. This entire area was kind of left blank at the time. And the other piece, excuse me, was right here, where the building commissioner determined that the front setback should apply to the rear part of this lot. Upon further review, him and I discussed together, since that's not specifically outlined in our zoning bylaws, that the front still has to apply. The front setback still has to apply to the driveway. So, we did find something that could be a future bylaw amendment for us, but as it's written now, the 40-foot setback only applies to where the driveway meets the road. So, then, as it shows here, then that setback is in compliance with the regulations. So, for the hammerhead lot, regulations under Section 5.3.2, I find that the plan is in conformance with those regulations. This is showing one single-family house. It can only be a single-family house in a residential district. The lot is plenty, plenty big for that zone. The, otherwise, I didn't, it meets the regularity factor, et cetera, barely, but it does. So, I didn't have any issues with the requirements under the hammerhead lot bylaw. The other point of contention that came up in the past was earthfill and earth removal. Now, there was an earthfill permit for this back in the day for a certain volume, but what we're here with today is, we have to deal with the fill that's there now. We can't try to figure out how much has been brought in, or how much is, or what's under there for that matter. That's only going to show up in the parking soil test when you try to build a house. So, the thing that I asked of the engineers to add the fill calculation onto the plan, which I believe was added as a note, approximately 240 cubic yards of material will be required to complete the site as designed. And after speaking with Jason, he says approximately because you could still use some of the fill from the foundation of the house...
Yeah.
To, I would say, for that, too.
It kind of depends on how much, you know, you hit.
Right.
Without doing tests all throughout the whole site, you don't know.
Correct. So, another thing I learned about this as well is, when the original special permit for earthfill was applied for back in 2012, we didn't have the lowest case study in case law back yet. Now, the lowest decision determined that a special permit does not require a separate earthfill permit, and the special permit itself would guidance, would guide the earthfill. In addition to that, any fill used on-site or repurposed throughout the site doesn't have to be part of the calculation. So, that being the case, what's before us today, this wouldn't require a separate special permit for earthfill, as is, it did back in 2012.
Even at only 240, that was...
Yeah, it's a 500 threshold anyways, but at the time, it was a 700 threshold. So, it's, or there was 700 proposed. So, even then, lowest case study means that they wouldn't have to come to us for a special permit for that. So, what's before us today is just a hammerhead lot regulation.
Complying all.
Correct.
Scott?
No questions.
John?
Just a couple of questions out of curiosity. Is the house built on virgin ground?
The house? Yeah, with a house with a...
And then with the proposed reserve septic area. Is there a bylaw or engineering thing where it has to be, that's pretty steep, we haven't laid out?
No. I mean, you just can't have over three feet of fill on top of it. It's all beautiful gravel, so it's, you can't ask for a better set of materials on the side of the road.
No, I'm just saying, when you go from the reserve area...
No, it's actually, it's fairly, it's a fairly flat area in there.
Your contours are pretty close together.
Maybe the septic should be rotated a little bit from where it is, but there's a fairly decent plateau.
Through the chair, if the septic had to be moved, in the opinion of the board, it helps. They can do that without needing to modify this plan in any way.
Okay.
These are these proposed locations, even the house itself can be shifted if necessary, but not entirely. It would have to be, for a good reason, if it's outside of like a well buffer or something, or a septic buffer.
Yeah.
So, I don't think that's the case in what's proposed here today. And I do support the idea of the house being located in its spot, or at least away from the wetlands as far as it is at this point, as proposed.
Wendy?
All set.
Jason?
All set.
I'm all set. Is there any public comment? There being none, you're all set, Matt?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Do you make the motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve the site plan?
Do I have a second?
Just a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. One opposed.
So, it's a 4 to 1 vote. Vote still reflects supermajority, so the vote passes. From here, we can discuss conditions.
So, in my review, Mr. Chairman, I found that this meets the requirements of the special permit, Section 9.3.5 and Article 139. Conditions that we'd be considering for this project would be the condition that it becomes effective only after it's been recorded at the Western Registry. That they will comply with all special permit requirements as outlined under Section 9.3. Skip item 3. For the special permit shall lapse, the proposed use or its construction is not commensurate for good cause within a period. Now, the board can decide if it's 24 or 36 months. I tend to use 36 as default.
I'm good with 36.
Okay. 36 months from the date of grant thereof. Applicant shall abide by all approval conditions of state agencies, town boards, departments, and commissions. Construction hours?
7:30 to 7:40.
And this being, this being a non-commercial property and explicitly residential...
A little different, yeah.
Yeah, it might be a little different for consideration. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just ask the audience, is there, if there's a bus stop nearby? Does it pick up right across the way?
Yeah, it's like diagonal down a little bit, yeah. Probably like five minutes.
So, the buses gone by 8 o'clock in the morning, or are they all done by then?
Yeah.
Standard hours, by the board?
Standard hours, 8 to 4:30 on Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 8 to noon.
Okay. Additionally, the lot shall be developed in accordance to approved plan. Shall submit a full-size ASBIL plan to the board once it's completed. Include Section 9, unless otherwise modified by decisions of the board. Shall comply with earthfilling. And I say that because the threshold that's there listed at 240 or so still requires guidance by the building commissioner. So, they're still permitting through that. And this is not located in the Asian lawn or beetles home. So, that's conditions 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. Questions, concerns? So, from here, I will draft the decision and try to have it ready for the next planning board meeting. At that point, the board would sign the decision. Then, I would stamp it at the town clerk's the following day, that being April 25th. Then, that starts the 21-day appeal period. From the appeal period, once, if it expires with no appeal, you can pick up the decision from the town clerk's office directly. At that point, it needs to go to the registry to be recorded, or else it doesn't exist. Okay? So, it's recorded at the registry from there. From there, you'll cite the book and page number on a A&R plan, re-submit to the board so that they can create the lot division with a signature, and that gets recorded at the registry, and you're good. If, of course, there's a vote process at all, give me a call at the office.
No, you just answered my question, so.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Another question. Anything on the bylaw house when we get the ASB drawing? Is there anything in the town by law tells us how soon we get the ASB drawing?
No, it's just something that we request as a condition. It's not a bylaw requirement at all, but, at least for the planning board to have it. Usually, it's given to the building commissioner for their occupancy, but we just ask that they provide us a cost at the same time, so it's in our records. You don't give them a time requirement, but they need to provide one if they want to buy the house, at least the building.
The building commissioner?
Right.
That's just the plot, right?
Yeah, exactly. It's not a full ASB.
It's a survey.
Right. It's why we ask for one, I'd like to know. Because it's always impossible to find how it's actually built when we're going back and someone wants to sell, or.
I think once it's given the plot plan, the probably is, got the occupancy permit, there should be a time limit, maybe ten years for you to do it.
Most of the time, we don't get it at all. Maybe, yeah, maybe that's a good idea for amendment.
Okay. We have a 7:30 PM applicant, Leith Azuni, requesting site plan approval. There is a request, Matt, to continue the statement 24th, or do we, I think we already did that.
No, sir, that was received today at approximately.
Oh, what's the other one down?
10 minutes before closing, but it did come in, and because of peer review, had not been, had not come back yet.
Do we have to vote to continue it?
Yes.
Do we have a vote to continue the statement 24th?
Make the motion to continue on 24th.
All set, good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we need any time there, or are we right for time and everything?
24th is okay, that one's fine, it's no shelf.
We have a 7:40 PM public hearing. Seaboard Solar Holdings LLC, site plan approvals under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the development of a 5.0 megawatt solar photovoltaic installation on five separate parcels on property located at 476 and 500 Lester Street. This has been continued from March 27, 2018. At this time, I will recuse myself as chairman for this public hearing and the next one for Sweb Development at 7:50 PM, and participate from the audience as a resident.
Thank you. Come on up. So, Matt, could you direct us on this one, please? Sure. So, as you are aware, this is not the first public hearing for Seaboard Solar. At our last meeting, we reviewed the final peer review from our peer review consultant, and all the items in that peer review had been addressed, less four items which were shown on the plan and proven to be minor that we agreed with at that time. So, what we decided at this meeting was there are three outstanding items, one being to connect with the Town of Lester regarding the construction entrance, the other one to connect with the Auburn Fire Department, I believe, to make sure that they were all set, that might have already been done. And then the third thing was to review some draft conditions together, and just to make sure that there's no opposition before the board were to close or to move to a vote. So, that being said, Mr. Chairman, before we turn over the applicant, I do have some draft conditions that I worked on through closing today, up until the meeting, that most of us are going to be seeing for the first time, so I'd like to share a couple of copies with the applicants and the board, it was part of your packets that were sitting before you when you arrived today. So here's the, and bear in mind that neither of these are in any way the language that it will, that it will read when the decision is final. It's just a very complex project with the most conditions that I've had to do so far, so. Most of them are just for discussion purposes, and if I may, if it's, I'll write with you, Mr. Chairman, I took care of the applicant, I can go right into this, unless the applicants have anything new to bring to the table.
We have no additional material to present to the board. If there's any clarification needed on any of the pre-existing items, or what was presented before, we're happy to discuss that with any board member, but if there's not.
I'd write in, Matt. Okay.
Get right into it.
I transferred the first four conditions out of our standard conditions, one of those being construction hours, as we've just been discussing. I left the standard on there, but open for discussion with the board. Typically, we usually do these things after a vote, so I'm not going to get into that particularly right now. One of the, item number four is our standard condition for lighting. This is a, now, I don't think we had a discussion as to what lighting would be there for security or anything, I don't know if we even brought that up. I'm not even sure if there would be. There's probably a couple of poles that might have a pole on it, but there's no houses anywhere near it, so I assume we didn't need anything like that. Yeah, no. Okay. But I didn't see the need for it, but I kept it on here for discussion purposes. Is there a light on a pole right near the entrance to the driveway, but that's within the right-of-way? You guys aren't at anything else, right? Okay, then I really don't need that condition. All right. All right, scratch number four, please. Approval shall lapse within two years if substantial use thereof is not commenced sooner, except for good cause. I pulled that right out of our bylaws. So that's not anything unfamiliar. This one's a little new. The applicant should provide proof of confirmation for national grid electricity capacity is already, is available for the entire project. I think you mentioned that already.
Yeah, I mean, we can fix the wording.
Yeah, that definitely needs help with wording.
I mean.
It's a certain style.
We have an interconnection services agreement, which.
Interconnection agreement.
Interconnection service agreement, ISA.
Thank you.
Which means that we have utility approval to interconnect the project, so we can kind of reward that, and the applicant should provide proof of confirmation from national grid that the project can achieve in the connection.
Got it. And you already have that agreement?
Yeah.
Would you mind providing us with a copy of it?
Oh, no, of course not.
That's all this condition asks for. So, item seven, provide proof of acceptance into the SMART program administered by D O E R prior to construction. I'm sure I can word that differently. Proof of acceptance might not be the right way to say that.
Yeah, no, but that's fine, because as right now, like, we don't know if it's going to be an email, it's going to be a letter, so proof of acceptance, I think it's just enough to prove anything.
Okay. Okay. So, the performance guarantee, I've been tossing this one around a little bit, and I'm not sure with the numbers yet. So, I wrote the applicant should apply for and secure a performance guarantee with the Auburn planning board that includes, no, I should have said either, a 2% annual escalator or a 40% contingency for decommissioning the entire solar array in all five parcels prior to construction. So I have this a little open for debate. So, we have another applicant who is proposing a 2% escalator on their decommissioning study, and we might be looking at that at the next public hearing, that might prove to be all it needs. So, or we're looking at a contingency on top of the original decommissioning costs. Now, the part that I'm not sure on, and this is really a question for Pedro, is whether that should be included on all five arrays at once, or should we be looking at five separate performance guarantees?
I would do, I would do five separate ones, just because we have, we're going to have five separate approvals.
Okay. All right, so that's what I wasn't sure about, so.
Just to clarify, you mentioned 2% annual escalator and a 40%, but it says 20%.
Yeah, so.
Is it 20, or?
Well, 2% annual escalator over 20 years, that makes it 40, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, the other thing, I'm just not sure which one you guys are more comfortable with. So, we can find out.
I mean, the two annual, it's usually more typical, what we usually do.
I might leave them both there?
I mean, if, either one is fine, we've done both.
Okay. I might leave them both on, just because you have to get acceptance of the program first, do a few things before you even go for the performance guarantee, so I think this would give the option, and I would be okay with that. The board could examine both and decide at the time which one they like. Okay. All right, and this would be for, for the entire solar array on individual lots, instead of all five?
Well, we'll be, yeah, exactly. A separate bond for every single project.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, this one, I think the number might be high or low, I think this is something we can discuss with DPW in the next few days, is provide to the Town of Auburn a payment to be provided escrow in the amount of 10 grand. Such payment made within 30 days of recording date for the performance guarantee, this would be used to, for road repairs of Lester Street as needed for construction wear and tear. Now, I'm not sure how I want to word this yet. This could be something that's part of, or maybe it's added to the contingency of the performance guarantee, instead of being a separate cash item. Maybe it's just in case the road gets chewed up, you can use some of those monies to repair it in spots, but at the same time, there might be enough in the contingency with the performance guarantee to cover something like that. So, not sure how we want to do that.
Can you discuss this with Bill Foyle?
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
And he came up with the 10 grand?
He said, well, he's on vacation, so I called him while he's on vacation.
All right.
I said, here's the number I threw out there, but if the board takes a vote to approve this, we can discuss that number prior to writing the decision and share it with Seaboard at that time. It's just, we ran into this with the Oxford Solar Project, when they put the construction entrance all the, through Auburn, and they donated 10 grand to us to help fix Kelly Street. So I just threw that number on there as a thing, but you guys are using so far less road in Auburn with your construction entrance being out of Lester, that it might not be a number like that. So, that number might change, I just wanted to generally see if you guys would be okay with either adding that as contingency, or just a dollar item for road repair. If it says contingency as part of the performance guarantee, it's returned to you if you don't need, if you don't use it or don't need to.
Yeah, I mean, we'd rather put it, you know, in the contingency, in case, you know, we don't use it.
Right. Okay. So, that's what I figured as much, but I might have to identify that as like a value in that, in the performance guarantee. So, just something for thought. We can talk about that one offline. So I did speak with Michelle Buck over at the Town of Lester. Our concern, and if I, I'll bring this up on the map, and I think you guys might be a little familiar with this.
Making the corner?
Making the corner, exactly. So.
Could be a tough one.
Yeah, it's a little unique, so.
And how long are those trucks?
Depends what's coming in.
I mean, it will all depend, but I do know that I probably, all the bidder, the EPC companies are bidding on this property, on this project, and none of them saw an issue with it. I mean, they do know that, you know, they're going to have to go through Lester because the bridge is low, but they didn't see to have any issues, and, like, you know, in the past, we're currently working properly, the terms are worse than this.
Yeah, this is tough.
So, like, but it's like, you know, like, I'm not the, the stable contractor, I can't give you details why, what exactly is going to happen.
Right.
I mean, all I can tell you is that, you know, is their word, they told me they felt confident on doing it.
We can't govern it, it's not in Auburn. So, bottom line being is, I just, I mentioned this to Michelle, and maybe all I put in here was a general idea that should work with the Town of Lester, ensure the construction routes specifically, this intersection is navigable for truck traffic, whether that be through police detail or whatnot. It's just something you guys have to work on.
Yeah, which I'm sure, you know, when we submit the, you know, the final detail trucking bro, they're going to come back, saying it's like, actually, you know, to make this turn, you guys have to contact the police department, like, do this, how you're going to do it.
Yeah, so I just put a general in there to say that you'll work with them. That was, that was the only real concern I had there. Michelle didn't seem to have issues with the rest of the route, so, that was fine. This one, we already mentioned, provide a planning board with a detailed construction schedule, includes daily truck volumes, truck volumes, excuse me, which will be reviewed at a public meeting prior to construction. I added the next piece, the applicant be responsible to notify budding landowners no more than five days prior to the meeting, just to review the construction schedule with the, it's like Mr. Shannon and the other person, just to make sure that they're aware when we're reviewing the construction schedule, that's all. And, I believe there's a person on Sunrise Two that was concerned about, Lot Five Two, but there's like three people. All right. And applicant provide Auburn Police/Fire access to the gated entrance.
Yeah, which would be a lock box.
Mm-hmm, perfect. All right. So this one, we talked about, but you mentioned the structural report was like 200 something pages long. I'm not sure what you want to do with this.
Like, if you guys want it, before we pull the permit, we'll submit that.
Is that something that has to go to the building commissioner anyways?
It will, I mean, we'll have to run, if, but when the time comes that we have to do the renovation of the bridge, like, you know, we're going to have to build a building.
They're going to need a building permit for the construction.
Yeah, we're going to have to build a building, but that will be run by the, by the middle department. It's not like, we can start doing it just with a one-year approval.
Right, right, I understand, I understand. So they're going to get that, so it's not something necessarily the planning board.
They go by the DPW, not the building?
I honestly don't know.
I think it'll be DPW.
Okay.
It'll govern bridges and roads, not the building department.
But it's a structure on a private parcel, so DPW only deals with town roads, bridges, things of that nature, they have no jurisdiction.
I don't know what the building department's going to know about bridges, so.
They'll probably send it out to a third-party review, that's what they do with large building projects, even, you know, 200,000 square foot building, the building departments typically don't review those projects, they send it out to the third-party review, and that cost is borne by the applicant, so. That's typically what they do if it's something that comes up that's not in there.
It may involve the DPW, because even though it's a private lot, you have public vehicles possibly going on, a police and fire, ambulance.
Yeah.
Has to pass their requirements, so.
Fairly well-regulated.
Yep.
Outside of the, outside of us.
Yeah, like, no, like, it's my understanding, like, I know for certain, you know, they're going to be submitting, you know, the report to the property department, either DPW, the building department, or, and they're going to, the town is going to be reviewing that, just to make sure that they do it properly.
Okay, okay. I mean, I'm okay with striking that one, just because it's outside of the law.
Yeah.
Okay. For now. So, 14, ensure the trucking pavement is in place prior to commencement. Commencement of bridge repair, I'm not sure if that's the right way to say that, or this was.
I'd say major site clearing activities, because we're going to need to get in and do, get off the road, do some work, but.
Probably clear the way to the bridge.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to get up there, do some clearing, so we can get some equipment up there, roughen the entry, clear the sections along the right-of-way, do some of that work, but, I mean, it shouldn't take more than a week or two, I mean, to grade off, to clear and grade that, you know, say the first 200 feet of the site there and grade that entrance, so.
Fair enough. I think that's a good way to say it, prior to major site clearing activities. Okay. 15, the applicant should work with the Auburn DPW, ensure temporary construction signs are installed to guide construction vehicles, it should be plural, to exit the property of a Lester Street towards Stafford Street. We already talked about putting those on, they might even be on the plans, I'm not sure. It's like temporary signs.
Yeah. We're going to put those on the construction. We don't want anybody turning left and hitting the bridge and us being responsible for that, so.
Right, exactly.
We'll have plenty of signage out there.
Yep. I just put it as a condition to work with DPW, so it's not hindering site maintenance.
Perfectly fine, yeah. We don't want that to happen.
Straighten it out.
And the second one, or 16 is similar, it says work with Auburn and Lester DPW. I don't think I can say you can make a condition you guys to work with Lester DPW, I don't think I can actually do that, so. I was going to say, shall work with Auburn DPW to locate temporary construction signs to caution local traffic coming from both directions to reduce speed, because there's a construction entrance coming up. I'll word that definitely. So, I'm going to skip 17 for a second, and come back to that. Responsible to maintain all stormwater basins, soils, spillways, erosion control measures measures during construction. I might read, during, no, it's not just during construction, that's kind of the life.
The life of the solar field.
Right. At least put a period, and then erosion control measures, period. Applicant is responsible to add any additional erosion control measures if deemed necessary in the opinion of the town engineer. That's like if there's a significant rain event and something fails and someone's complaining, then they might have to respond and say, you might need to add this to it. So, and then the last piece of that is responsible to move hay bales, silt fence. I wrote hay bales because I'm not going to write waddles, it just seems like a weird word. Hay bales, silt fence once a project is completed, there's way too many instances where those things are just left throughout and the silt fence just doesn't disintegrate, so. This looks awful, so that, that's a pretty standard condition. And, I don't know why 19's left open like that, but. Submit the ASPL Plan of Plan Board for each parcel once construction is completed. I'm going to come back to 17. So, this is more of a discussion for the board prior to the close of the hearing. Phase construction, and we did, we did talk about this, generally, there'll be the bridge, then there'll be the detention basins and the erosion control measures, and then clearing, and we were talking about lot by lot or clear the whole thing. I, I just, I need to add, I need to ask it of you guys, financially, obviously, you can't just do one, build it, and then move to the next one, build it. Financially, that's going to be an incredible burden for you guys. Now, we're talking about how many acres of clearing overall, we're looking at a pretty large number, if the whole thing is to be cleared at once, we're pretty much opening it up for a waterfall, so. How do you guys plan on attacking the phased, any sort of phased clearing instead of doing the whole hill?
I can answer that question, we've been saying, you know, we told a conservation committee that we're going to start, you know, in Lot One, clearing that area, and as we moved up, you know, we're going to start installing the BMPs, you know, including the silt fence, the detention basins, and that's where we're going to go. And as far as we go, we're also going to start installation of the panels, ideally, you know, when we are in Lot, I don't know what Lot.
Three.
Lot Three, hopefully, you know, we're going to start racking this one over here. So it's not the, it's not that we're going to be clearing, you know, 40 plus acres and lift them up and just wave with the racks.
Right.
It's not, like, you have to have anything else.
Right, so, and that's what I'm wondering, is like, we hear it, how do we know it? Yeah, so, like, is there a phased construction plan you guys can provide, or any sort of thing that we can condition as something you provide later once you get accepted into the program along with?
That's the way you can do that.
I think, I think.
Once one lot is cleared and you move into the next, solar panels have to be going on the first lot, and it has to continue down the road like a chain.
Is that what you guys are intending?
I think that's probably what they're going to do, they want to get the solar panels up as soon as possible.
Do you come in, just, just a general question, will you have the tree company come in and cut all the trees? Because those tree companies, they come in, they cut, they may not pull the stumps, but they'll probably cut more than one lot at once, just doesn't make sense for them to mobilize.
No, I understand, so you go in, in your first lots, Lot One, right? Once that's cleared, he's moving on to clear more stuff.
Correct, yeah.
You already got equipment in there pulling stumps, getting ready to put the solar panels on.
Correct, yeah.
You're going to go on top of each other, or else it's, you're never going to get it done.
Well, but the, but the other thing is like, it's not like until we're done with Lot One, we're not going to move to Lot Two, because as Nick said, like, the clearing company goes pretty fast.
They're going to move faster than the other groups, that's kind of what I'm getting at, so they could be done with all five lots before the first group gets to Lot Two, and that's kind of what I'm trying to look for.
Well, the, the clearing company, the company with the same site contractor, so as they go, like, the first thing that they do is like, before clearing, so they place the silt fence around, and then, you know, they start clearing all the trees, and as they go, they start installing the BMPs, and they start with the, I mean, like, one condition, I think we have in the other condition, I'm not sure, we can double check, is that, you know, the BMPs are really like in place as the lot is clear.
Right. Yeah, no, agreed, it would definitely have to be. I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say, Mr. Chairman, so, so let's assume that you guys, you get your bridge down, you do this lot, bridge is here, right, so you're kind of doing that in the front.
Yeah.
Possibly even more, bridges haven't, I don't know yet. So, but you're going to, from what I understand, do the bridge first, and then you're going to be doing your stormwaters as you move along the road, right? That one's probably last or something, so.
Yeah.
You come into this one next, they do clearing of this area, I would assume. I'm just curious what the path would be, and then how far ahead could it possibly get before they even finish this site?
Well, they can't access the upper portion of the site until the bridge is done, because they can't get their equipment across. There's no access for anybody, so. It's going to be come in, clear, bridge most likely simultaneously, you know, once they kind of get some room to get their, you know, whatever equipment they need to work on the bridge and, you know, get the slabs and everything up there, bridge crews up there. Same time, they'll probably be doing grading and, you know, grade the basin in and some grading in the front there, those types of activities, and then hopefully by the time that's done, the bridge will be done, they can move on to Lot Two, racking will start going in on Lot One, clear, start working on getting everything cleared, so it's going to be a stepped process, but it's going to start slow. I think once they get across the bridge.
Kind of follow.
It's going to start moving much quicker.
That's what I'm wondering, that's, that's where the, that's where the bigger grades tend to be, so.
Correct, yeah.
It's like, it's like, make it so that you guys aren't on all five lots at once, or something to that degree, because it's, it's a lot of clearing first that could happen.
One thing you could say is they couldn't pull the stumps. They can clear but not pull the stumps, that way you don't lose the natural erosion control.
Correct, I think once you start pulling the stumps, then you start getting erosion issues, I mean, once, you know, unless you start stabilizing and spreading the wood chips and doing all those types of activities, that fall, that should follow that.
Okay.
Right after, but, I mean, just cutting trees, you're not going to get the washout issues, you know, typically, they'll stockpile the cut trees on site until they're ready to do that other work, then they'll just chip them, I mean, they can sit there for a couple months, and then once they start progressing forward. So, yeah, tree clearing is, may not be, maybe stump removal or stumping and grubbing of areas to be graded, because we're not going to stump the entire project site, you know, it's just mostly areas, you know, with the, with the site grading and, you know, in general, where the panels are, so. You know, the areas and limits, they're just going to leave that, those, the stumps there, I mean, they're natural erosion control, and they'll keep the soil tighter around the perimeter.
Mr. Chairman, I think you understand what I'm trying to get at.
No, I do, I do.
So, that being the case.
Clearcutting 40 acres and grubbing it is never a good idea.
So, through the chair, I just, would you guys mind drafting that condition? To an extent, I think you know what I'm trying to say, but I think you might be able to write it.
Yeah, we could do something.
I can, I can draft, I mean, I can't remember from the top of my head, but I'm pretty sure we had like other conditions, I would look through it.
Sure.
Saying, actually, like, if we have multiple, saying all the options that we.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a way to, to keep that all, I guess, stopping and rubbing all at once and creating a total washout.
And this kind of ties into, you know, the final construction schedule, because we don't have that yet, so they haven't sought the contractor, because we could come up with a plan, and the contractor comes in, "No, I'm going to do it this way," you know, which, we want to come up with something that's specific and addresses that issue, but is, still gives somebody enough flexibility, so that's why I said, you know, they can cut trees, but they can't, you know, pull the stumps or rub the, you know, areas to be graded, which makes sense.
So maybe that's a condition prior to construction too, just as providing the construction schedule, be provide, providing a phased construction.
Yeah, phased construction.
Okay, that would be great.
I was kind of curious, how long's the bridge?
Eighty feet?
Eighty feet. Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty decent structure.
It's a pretty decent old railroad bridge.
Yeah.
Okay, so that covers 17. So those are the ones that I proposed, unless, if anything I missed, I can redraft these, but I guess my big question is the applicant opposed any of these conditions as concepts until they're, you know.
No, no, I mean, the only comment that I have was, you know, really, the ISA, but that's all.
Okay. I mean, that covers a lot of the stuff we talked about, Mr. Chairman, I think it hits on everything. Otherwise, you know, the board still would need to, inclined to close the hearing and cast a vote prior to deciding if it's a vote of approval with conditions or not.
Okay. Any comment? Any public comment? Motion to close the meeting?
I'll make the motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So vote.
Looking for a motion to approve or deny with conditions, approve with conditions or?
Make a motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is that 3-1? 3-1, so the vote, vote still passes 3-1, just needs a simple majority of the board. So, I'll finalize, I have 45 days to draft the conditions, I hope to have at least some sort of blueprint in before the next meeting so that we can sign. So, what we have is five separate applications, so, in theory, we have to take this vote five, four more times, just because that's how the application was submitted. So let's assume that first one was for Lot One, and we need to also close the public hearing for Lot Two.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for Lot Two.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I also need a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve Lot Two with conditions.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All opposed?
It's also 3-1, so we have Lot Three.
I'll make a motion to approve, sorry, to close Lot Three.
I know, it's boring, but, procedure.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Lot Three with conditions.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't know where you are.
Four.
I'll make a motion to close Lot Four.
Ground like that.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Lot Four with conditions.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those. I'll make a motion to close Lot Five.
Not going to change now. I decided to raise the same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve it, plant it with the conditions.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so we are now through those. Great job with the project, guys.
All right, thank you.
So I'll draft five decisions with similar conditions.
Yes.
Hopefully before the next meeting, because you can tell from the agenda, I now have two, three, four, five, six, seven, oh, man, six plus, 11 decisions to do. So that ought to be good. My assistant can do it, I don't have. So, four conditions, five decisions. On the brighter side, we are clearing up the agenda a little bit.
We are.
But, so I will be in touch with those draft conditions, and I'll put everything in front of you guys before it comes back to the board.
Right.
If you need to have it reviewed with the legal team or anything like that, please do, I certainly recommend it, and if they have feedback to give back to me and that I can add, we could also, I'd appreciate it, so.
Did you have conservation stuff?
Yes, I do, glad you asked, let's go. Forgot to mention the conservation committee did approve this project, that's the other condition, so.
It does exist.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Don't lose your on the next guys.
I'll go.
The next guys, project, you know, the field.
Yeah.
We're clearing 40 acres of trees. I know, I know, but you know what, I wanted to.
Yeah, I agree, I didn't want that point either.
I didn't want that project.
It's something telling.
Zoning approved it.
Yeah, zoning approved it, we're, you know.
Are they here?
Is there something?
Take care.
Good night.
Set up.
Does anyone need recess for bathroom or anything?
Yes.
Make a motion for a five-minute recess?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All set. The 750 Applicants Web Development USA LLC requesting site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the development of a 6-megawatt photovoltaic solar installation located at 430 Rochdale Street, this is continued from the March 27th meeting.
All right, Matt?
What we have still is a site plan approval application for a solar project on one parcel of land. The most recent developments are, we've had a peer review come back, we've had response to that peer review, and we have updated plans received in our office yesterday. So, typically the board likes to have some time in advance to review these plans and peer reviews prior to moving towards a vote, and there's a handful of other things that were submitted too, including some information about a performance guarantee or bond that I'm sure the applicant would discuss, so. Some of the things that we had discussed at our last meeting was the status of High Street as a public or private way, this 100% a private road. We also asked that the fire department be consulted regarding some of the interior driveways to make sure that the vehicles could navigate on the proposed interior roadway, so that's where we left off, and if you'd like, we turn it back to the applicant.
All right.
Yeah, great. So, I figured we'd run through some of the questions you guys had last time, and if you haven't had a chance to do the deep dive review of the plans, apologies for getting in kind of at the 11th hour there, but we'll just kind of run through the changes, and you'll notice them when you do that, do the review, so.
I'm sorry, just to introduce yourselves to the record, so that Rachel can get your name.
Yes, I'm Michael Carey from Swam Development.
David McKay with Weston and Sampson Engineers.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'll go, I'll use your list as a guide from last time, Dave. So, the fire department, so I had a conversation with Greg Warren, captain, one of the captains of the fire department, he would have received the final plans or the most recent update at the same time you folks did, so he was off today, so we didn't get a chance to do that deep dive yet. I chatted with him at the end of last week, however, and he mentioned two things just in our conversation, one was to ensure 20-foot width on the access road for, making it easy for the vehicles to get up there. Second thing was that the main vehicle that they would most likely need to access the site would be their brush truck. You don't need a crane or anything tall on a solar project, so, brush truck access was the main thing. So those were the items that he highlighted, and we've, we've captured both of those in the plans, so they'll be able to access. Yeah, there was a request for the paved apron at the site entrance, that's been added, and it's on page 21. Double sediment barrier of the project limits, that's also been added on page eight, so you guys will see that. Construction sequence to the plans that discuss the stormwater management features going into the beginning before any clearing, that's on page three, so that's been, that change has been made. Status of High Street, that was something that you were looking into, Matt, and that's, sounds like that's been cleared up, private way.
Right.
Construction signage along the traffic route, that's no problem, we can certainly do that. As you, I don't have the slide this week, but we have our planned route, so we can certainly add signage along that, along that way. And, yeah, then there was a discussion of the performance bond or surety that we are, you know, happy to provide. Think, I see what you have done with these folks, and you mentioned 120 to 150% of the decommissioning cost, so two thoughts on that, we're happy to do that, and I think a letter of credit was one of the, the options for, for how to post that around the time of construction. Thought I'd float the idea that, one thing that other solar projects have done that Weston Sampson had brought to our attention, was the fact that because the decommissioning scrap cost is actually about twice the value of the, of the 20-year inflated bond rate, some towns actually waive that bond and just opt to keep the scrap, because the cost of steel and everything. Unsure where that'll actually be in 20 years, but it is pretty, pretty significant, so. Unsure where that'll actually be in twenty years, but it is pretty, pretty significant, so, that's, thought that we'd wanna to float out there. But, uh, but yeah, if your bylaw seems to favor that letter of credit, that's also an option that we'd be, we could do, so, so yeah. Any other thoughts on that? Yeah, that was the end of my list there, uh, just to capture the, um, outstanding questions from last time, so.
So what are we talking about? That one specific?
No, um, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, my, um, my big thing was making sure the fire department kinda reviewed the road, and I know, uh, you know, I don't know if you spoke to Captain Warren over the phone, or if he really got a chance to see the plan or not, my big concern was his, um, his two ninety-degree elbows here, I just don't know if the truck can maneuver those or not. Uh, it's, hopefully he can review those on his time. That's been, sorry to interrupt, but that's been addressed on the revised plan, so.
Okay, okay.
And the brush truck is the turning radius of a large pickup truck typically, so. Would be able to get around it, but there's room to put a more reasonable, uh, radius on the turns there, so.
Pull that plane up here, too, just to.
Yeah. So it's working with the grade, and it's, uh, no longer a ninety-degree elbow.
Two forty dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, I just have the old electronic version of the.
Right.
So, okay.
So on the hard copy you received yesterday, that's been addressed.
Okay, great. So, uh, to the chair, naturally, I would need a electronic version of that, if you, if you wouldn't mind?
Definitely.
Um, in addition, um, as mentioned before, I'm sure the board would like some more time to review the plans and some of the amendments at the same time. The last peer review, we already went through, already went through all that stuff. There were like two or four items that, that you reviewed at the last meeting with us.
Yes.
And then I'm sure there was round of modified plans also. So, um, aside from that, and being able to go through some draft conditions with you guys, I just kinda shared the one from the last applicant.
Sure.
Um, so, um, just provide feedback on some of those items, so I'd appreciate that too.
Yeah.
There was an item brought up by one of the butters previously about the limits of clearing, making sure that the, those are clearly identified on the plans. Do you mind just showing that here?
Sure.
This is the overall view of the project area, and the, uh, cross hatch areas are the proposed areas to be cleared. Um, it's the large brushy area in the, um, middle of the field, and then some clearing around the perimeter of the site to, um, prevent shading of the, uh, solar panels, but it's all focused immediately adjacent to the proposed solar development, nothing out into the property in any direction, just specific to the solar development area.
Okay, and you had also mentioned previously, uh, through the chair, there were some landscape plantings proposed and a couple of spots?
Yeah. So let's get them up. Uh, yeah, the proposed landscaping is along the south, along that property that's directly to the, to the butter, uh, as well as on the, um, uh, the butter across the street, uh, actually on their property, so.
Right, and it's offsite, so we can't.
With those plans, Mike, you said you would hold their optional.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, they're not to be executed right away, which is that, uh.
Through the chair, Mr. Public.
Bad example for everybody watching on the, frankly.
There we go.
Yes, so, uh, proposed landscaping along the southern property line there, and then optional landscaping.
What was the first spot again, I'm sorry about that.
Right along the southern property line.
Any opposed for the other adjacent landowner?
No, uh, they seem.
They supported the project publicly here.
Yeah. They've already got some natural screening there as well, when you're up on the hill, you can kinda see their roof, but you can't see any of their windows or really much of the yard. There's some, already some trees, you know, um, that are blocking the view anyway, so. Yeah.
Other, through the chair, are there any, uh, I don't think there's any wetlands crossings or anything, right? There's no temporary structures like that.
Um, phasing wise, do you guys intend on doing certain areas first, or building out the interior access road first,
then doing the detention stormwater management areas, setting up stormwater management, ECMs and stuff, and then building the array? Or, I'm just curious how you plan on phasing this out instead of?
Um, the typical, uh, sequence would be to, um, install the erosion control measures, and then construct the road and, um, to the limits needed and able to provide access for the, um, other parts, but the drainage will be constructed concurrently with the, um, road construction most likely.
What do we have here? Looks like, is it a hill or is it a?
Yeah.
It's a hill, it's a steep hill.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly steep there, and, you know, we're not putting modules there now, so it actually helps.
Maybe a berm or something?
Yeah, it doesn't look that natural, it's, uh, it looks like it was, you know, somewhat of a, you know, natural drainage at one point, but when it was used as a field, it might have been just to, you know, to, it's channeling water out, but, yeah, it's just a kinda steep section of the, of the hillside.
So, uh, through the chair, I just, I just needed a little more time to review the plan, come up with, uh, some ideal conditions for this, and, uh, otherwise, uh, share, share these, this draft with the group, get the actual comments from the fire department, and make sure that they confirm that the revised plans are what they're, are sufficient from them. I'd love that in the form of a letter, that'd be the best way to get it. So, those things being outstanding, you guys already have your conservation approval, you've already gone through that.
Yep.
And, um, those are just some outstanding items I could take, that I'd recommend continuing to the next meeting.
Great. Motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue the hearing till, what is it, April?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. So we'll put it on the next agenda, in the meantime, catch up with Captain Warren, try to get that in writing from him, uh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
And, uh, if you're, I'm not asking for a face control, construction plan yet, just review some of these drafts. Most of it's probably stuff we've already talked about, stuff you guys have already done.
Yeah.
So, uh, cause you, you've been, you've been great to work with to this point, and, um, if you have any issues with the way some of the wording is, I've already changed some things, but it might not apply to your project as much as they apply to the others, so, um, your feedback would be appreciated too, but I'll, I'll try to trim this down as well. I don't know if we'll be ready for the next meeting.
Sure, yeah, sounds good.
It's a lot great.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Should we sign it continues?
You can take off that out now. You can take off that out.
Yeah.
You go back to work? Definitely, yeah, I'll text it right after.
Cool.
Just quit, actually, like, the whole people. I'll be special counsel.
Writing is enough, you just be a.
Trying. Close it off.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you. Alright, we'll be in touch?
Definitely, thank you, Matt.
Alright. Thank you, easy to describe.
Thanks a lot.
See ya.
It's a bummer when things come in late, just not enough time, it's just not enough time.
Uh-huh. That's their fault. Just nice to get stuff off the agenda.
Yes.
You can't rush it.
You can't get them all off the agenda.
No, you can't.
We have an eight P M applicant, Masad Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval under section nine point four point one of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping and site layout, reconfiguration of property located at fifty-four Faith Ave. This, did, this is already continued.
We received a request to continue yesterday, yes, to move this project. This is, uh, I, I was anticipating they'd request to continue to May eighth, cause we're waiting for town meeting vote for their project, but they asked unfortunately until the next meeting, so we're gonna have to do this again, so.
We have a motion.
Motion to continue to April twenty-fourth?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote.
Page two.
We have an eight-ten public hearing. The applicant is Auburn Planning Board, request to hold a public hearing to discuss potential rescission of definitive subdivision approval in accordance with MGL chapter forty-one and eighty-one W and Auburn subdivision rules and regulations, section six point three for a subdivision known as Parkerchog Farms, seventy-one Curtis Street. Is request to continue this till April twenty-fourth.
Make a motion to continue to April twenty-fourth?
I have a question. How many times are we gonna continue this?
It's the last one, they dropped off new plans.
Okay.
Last week.
I'll second it.
Cause I said to him, we, we kinda gave that to him.
It was a courtesy.
The lady got sick as a courtesy, and we did it, but they've been keeping up with you, and you felt that it was reasonable, whatever you were saying with, so.
Yep.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. Member discussion, associate member vacancy, we go through this each time, and if you know anyone that's interested, have them apply. Master plan committee update.
I'll table it at the next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
And three additional content?
I do have one item.
Go ahead.
We received, uh, this annually from the Western Registry of Deeds, just asks the board members to sign their signatures on this form, proving that these are the signatures that they will see on A and R plans that are recorded at the registry. So I just require. Just, uh, all five signatures, cause tough, so you print and then sign, and I'll fill in the rest. While those are going around, Mr. Chairman, the board wants to vote on minutes.
I made some corrections on the February thirteenth, I'll just give those to you, Matt.
Yes. Thank you.
There you go.
I got your email also, I think, um, yeah, I think what happened was, is that he was actually at the meeting.
It just got carried over, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so, the motions are reflected correctly, but it just needs to show that you were there instead of absent.
Okay, we have the minutes of January ninth.
Those were already done, so that shouldn't have been there.
February thirteenth minutes?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the thirteenth with the corrections that I provided to Matt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meetings, uh, minutes of, uh, February twenty-seventh?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-seventh?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of, uh, March twenty-seventh?
Thank you. We don't have those, do we?
Nope, not yet.
Okay, minutes are done, next meeting is April twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. If you have any other comments from anybody, uh?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.